Okay, we are going to call to order the August 23rd, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission. So everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Vice Chair Kempner, here. Commissioner Patterson?
Here.
Commissioner Stern?
Here.
Commissioner Pasalakwa?
Here.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here.
Commissioner Hamame?
Here.
Did I get it right?
The first time, before you corrected yourself.
Okay. And Commissioner Bardis said he had a prior commitment this evening. Okay, so we need to decide if we are going to excuse his absence or not? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Bardis' absence for this evening.
Support.
Can we roll call this? Or voice? You can voice vote it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of the agenda. Anyone have any changes or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the July 26th, 2022 meeting. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes? Or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communications. At our desks, we have a Michigan Planner and some email communication in regards to the Vincetta, parking lots that will be in front of us later. Are there any other communications? Nothing else? Okay. And now we go to citizen comments. This portion is for items not on today's agenda. You have time to address agenda items during the meeting. For any comments, we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and city of residence, and limit your comments to three minutes. The Planning Commission will not engage you in conversation, but we will be noting your comments and will try and address them during discussions. Are there any citizen comments? Okay. Moving on. PSP 1422, 3860, 12 Mile Road, America's Stamp Shop Edition. Would you like to give us an intro? Yes, so this is a fairly straightforward project. America's Stamp Shop is proposing a second story on their building. This would be for residential use. They would also be restriping the parking lot, adding an outdoor bike rack, and providing some facade updates. We are recommending approval. There are a couple of conditions noted in the staff report, mainly having to do with if exterior signage is proposed or lighting that they would have to comply with the ordinance requirements, and asking that you find that the design is complementary to the existing building and those around it. That's pretty much it. Very good. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Would you like to come in and give us any information you'd like to give us?
I'm Todd Jay from the owner of the building and the business. Thank you, I'm glad you like it. Yeah, simply, you know, I've got an old flat roof on the building and I need to stop the water. So it's time for an update. And I have a lot of space in there and I know that zoning is there for residential on 12 Mile and I believe it's time to do it. So yeah, I've tried to think about what the building looks like and how to keep it in character with the community and I think we've achieved that.
Very good.
My name is Katie Schmitz. I work for JSN Architecture. Basically, just like Todd said, he's having water issues with his flat roof. So we're adding just a simple gable roof over that, not adding any actual height to the wall because the building itself is kind of already two stories. So we benefited with that and realized that there was an opportunity for the living on the second floor. We also brought a few samples here. So this would be the roof color and then this is the faux wood siding that you can see, the darker, darker wood color out there. It does a metal panel to look like wood, which is easy maintenance.
Very good. Does the Commissioner have any questions?
I got a couple of questions. As far as the mezzanine, how does that work on the second floor? I guess I was kind of confused with, because you have two areas labeled as the mezzanine.
Yeah, I think if you go to the-
Next one down?
Next floor, yep.
Yep.
It's inside the warehouse on the second floor. So it's more storage or, you know, game room place, whatever I want it to be, but separated from the actual living space.
That's what I was wondering, okay.
Yeah, it could wind up being additional storage for the business if need be, but you know, isolated.
It's two levels, obviously you can see there's two stairs, so obviously there would be two mezzanines, but it is one large open area.
Okay.
Part to your left view is already pre-existing in there. It's already used for storage.
Okay, so then you're adding stairs and then the mezzanine on the right is a little bit higher than the-
Yeah, because it matches the floor plan from the rest of what we're adding.
Yeah, keeping that new mezzanine that's on the right will be the same floor level as the living area apartment. Kind of our goal is to take the existing roof trusses and try to reuse them to save on costs. So that would be why we're trying to keep it level.
And then the other staircase, of course, is isolating, you know, fire stopping and giving it a place for a future-
Emergency fire exit?
Yeah. And a lift.
On A11, the RTU that's right off the balcony, is that, that's existing?
That's our existing rooftop unit, yeah.
And then, but you can't, I'm assuming it sits below the roof line as shown on A2?
It does.
Okay.
It's not visible from the street.
Yeah, you can't see it at all.
You were asking about the balcony above that roof, the existing roof line?
I was, there's an RTU right in front of the balcony and I was just, because I couldn't see it, I didn't know if it was just not being represented or it was just below the existing roof line.
Yeah, there's like parapet walls there, so-
Yeah, it's completely covered.
Any other questions?
I also had a question about the square footage. On the cover, it indicates the square footage is 1907 and then you're using 70% for the usable. Is that 1907 the entire first floor? Because I think on the application, it was like 4,000 square feet.
So are you wondering in terms of parking requirements?
You know what? The building itself, the main store comes off. That's including the footage of the main store as well.
So it's like-
That doesn't have an addition going over it.
So the 1907 was purely for calculating parking? Then the other is like a warehouse?
Yeah, so are you, Commissioner Dolan, referring to the code analysis on the cover sheet?
Correct.
Okay. So that's going to get into the different types of uses that fall under the building code and what requirements pertain to those in terms of fire separation. If you get a little bit lower, we get into means of egress. So I think the 1907 is related to calculating the occupancy of the B business use area under the building code?
Yeah, that's correct, yeah, what she said.
But is, so that's the first, that's the entire first floor, square footage?
That would be the retail space. That's towards the front, the part that goes north and south.
Yeah, I got you, okay. Yeah, because I was looking at the, I was looking at the dimensions and the dimensions are way more than 1907. So I was, that's why I was confused like what that was coming from, but I understand now.
Anyone else before I open it to citizen comments? Okay, I'm going to open it for citizen comments and if we need to ask you guys more questions, I'll have you come back up.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any, is there anyone here who wants to comment on this item? Going once, going twice? Okay. Discussion. Anybody want to start?
I think this is a good use of property. It's allowed in the zoning district. It's recommended. I don't, I don't have any objections to it.
Same. Pretty straightforward project.
Right?
Yeah.
I tend to agree. It'll be an improvement.
It will definitely be an improvement.
So.
It'll clean it up a little bit.
Yeah. All right, well, if there's no more discussion needed, then I will entertain a motion if there's somebody that wants to make one.
I can. I'll make a motion to approve PSP 1422, 3860, 12 Mile Road as presented with reference to our staff letter, finding the site does approve or does fit within our approval and that the materials and architect presented do meet our standards. Exterior lighting can be reviewed administratively in the final site plan with approval from DPW Fire, Marshal and Community Development Director.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? And call the vote? Vice Chair Kempner? Yes. Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Pasalakwa?
Yes.
Commissioner Dolan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamame?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. All right, our next item, PSP 1022, Vincetta Garage, Eaton and Oxford Parking Lots. Kristin, would you like to give us an introduction?
I would like to, and this is going to be a little bit lengthy, so I apologize in advance. But yes, I definitely would. So, in resolution of a lawsuit that was brought by the applicant against the city, this was a number of years ago, as I'm sure that many of you heard and had the chance to review in the packet. The city and the applicant entered into a consent judgment. For those of you that might not be familiar with a consent judgment, it is a situation in which two parties agree to settle a lawsuit and agree to those terms and the judge accepts those terms and then they move forward per the items outlined in that document. In this case, the Planning Commission's scope in the consent judgment is to determine whether the site plan is consistent with the judgment and with the standards of the zoning ordinance. There were several standards of note in the consent judgment that would become under that purview and I want to point those out for you. One is the use of the property as parking, so that is allowed even though the zoning is residential still. The next is that a minimum number of parking spaces are permitted to be put there. So both Eaton and Oxford lots include minimum numbers of parking spaces that the applicant is permitted to have and that the layout has to achieve. That the site be designed per the standards of the P1 zoning district, so that's our standard parking district. That lighting be shielded with zero foot candles off-site so that no lighting be escaping off-site on these particular lots and that a screen wall and landscaping be provided. All of these conditions have been met with the exception of the lighting standards. That's noted in the planning review memo that the particular lighting standards that are currently not in compliance can be brought into compliance with the appropriate shielding provided on the lights. So we would be looking as a matter of administrative review and approval should this move forward this evening. The applicant would need to submit cut sheets for the lights. They would need to include shields and they would also need to include an updated photometric plan so that staff can confirm zero foot candles are escaping the site. The plan also meets all of the requirements that are quantifiable and dimensional standards of the zoning ordinance. So that has to do with the size of parking spaces, the required size of drive aisles, those sorts of things that we can measure. There are some more discretionary standards that do exist in the zoning ordinance. Some of you may be familiar with them, we've talked about them before. For example, Section 138679 notes that landscaping and lighting are provided where appropriate and in a complimentary fashion. Given that we do not have site landscape standards as an ordinance requirement, the Planning Commission cannot hold this parking lot to a higher standard than we have held any other parking lot in reviews in the past or higher than what the written standards of the ordinance require. So in the past, you'll recall, the Planning Commission has often talked with applicants about addressing parking lot layouts and changing landscaping, for example. Those similar conversations can continue, but we cannot hold this to a higher standard than we held any other applicant and we cannot alter the dimensional standards of parking lot requirements, for example, either. Having said all that, there are several recommendations that are noted in the Carlisle-Wartman review that can be discussed with the applicant. First off, I want to just note that the applicant has provided a sketch of some alternate site layouts and the purpose of that sketch was to illustrate that with the layout that they've sketched out, the minimum number of spaces cannot be achieved with the alternative layout that's shown, that was requested in the Carlisle-Wartman letter. Some other recommendations include substituting native or non-native plant species, increasing the wall along Oxford to a minimum of five feet, and reducing the number of light poles. All of these are requests that the Planning Commission can ask of the applicant but cannot necessarily require. Lastly, I would like to note that this has been a lengthy process for everyone that's been involved and that there were some expectation that the applicant would put their best foot forward in terms of design. While staff is recommending approval as the applicant has met the standards of the ordinance and has met the standards of the consent judgment, the Planning Commission should consider requesting and discussing these additional items with the applicant in the spirit of good development and just general neighborliness. If you have any questions, I am happy to address those. I would also note that the HRC review, our engineering consultant, the DPW review and the Public Safety Department have all recommended approval with some very minor outstanding items that are typically addressed later in the pre-construction process.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for Kristin.
Sure. Yeah.
Kristin, did any staff member review the alternate parking configuration plan? I didn't see any reviews for that.
So there's not been a review of the alternate parking configuration plan. If you'll notice, it's, the number of spaces that could be put on the lots was pretty significantly less than what the applicant is allowed to have. If the Planning Commission would want an alternate review of that plan, we would need an engineered plan, not just a sketch plan. We would need something that's to scale that I can measure.
I mean, I'm not an engineer, so I can't say whether there is a better configuration that would meet the requirement, the minimum parking.
Yeah, and so that's not something that me as a staff person would ever design for the applicant. We would rely on the applicant's engineer to design an alternate parking layout, I believe, on, might have been the Oxford lot, they changed to the angled parking, which was one of the recommendations in the Carlisle-Wartman review. There's not a whole lot you can do with an alternate parking layout here, honestly. I mean, that would be one option that you can look at, but because they're trying to connect to an existing parking lot on Eaton, for example, you know, other than reconfiguring the existing lot, there's not a whole lot to work with there. So it would be under the purview of the Planning Commission. You could always ask that the applicant provide an engineered, to-scale plan of an alternate layout to further prove, if you would like, that an alternate layout can't be achieved with the same number of parking spaces.
And the number of parking spaces is set because that's part of the DCA agreement?
Yes, not one more. And I would imagine the applicant would go with not one less. So that is set.
Do you know when the consent judgment was entered into, was there a plan that had, that was-
There was not a plan.
How did they come up with that number in the consent judgment? Does anyone here know?
The applicant might be able to provide some insight. That was several years before I was in this space and before any of the planning commissioners were. So I'm not exactly sure how they came up with that number, but there was no exhibit that included a plan.
I realize it's not important for our decision because we're stuck with a number. I'm just curious how we came up with that number if there was only one way it could be configured to fit that number, but, all right, I'm sorry.
Would the applicant like to come up and?
Give me a minute to just kind of calm down here, but I should, all right. Personally, I believe that we should-
Right now, it's the time for the applicant to talk about his-
I'm sorry, sir. No problem.
We will have citizen comments in just a few minutes.
Good evening.
Hi.
How's everyone? Excuse me. My name's Tom Callis, I represent the applicant. My address for the record is 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 201, and that's in Bigham Farms, Michigan. So we are here this evening seeking final site plan approval for both Eaton Street and the Oxford Parking Lots that were part of a consent judgment that was entered with the court pre-COVID. The intentions, obviously, were at the time, you know, the restaurant was booming, business was good, economy was good. The intention was to build these parking lots, get the cars off the road, which is what the residents wanted, what the city wanted. We entered into consent judgment. We came up with a number of spaces for both lots by virtue of different plans and layouts that we had prepared during the litigation process, settlement process. This case went to actual facilitation with a former judge to get it resolved. Different layouts were presented, of course. And then what we came up with between the two parties is that the best layouts and the number of spaces that we can safely put on both of these sites was 28 for Eaton Street, you know, there's an existing parking lot there already, and 26 for Oxford Road. Now, we looked at different issues relative to that. We wanted to provide as much safety as possible. So for example, on both Oxford and Eaton, we agreed not to allow ingress and egress off those roads. The ingress and egress into the parking lots has to come in off the alleyways. So that had a big, or that was a big part of the layouts because when you can only come in from, you know, the alley as opposed to the main streets, we had to lay those parking spaces out in a manner that was safe, provided plenty of room for cars to park and maneuver around and provided lanes that were not just one-way. You've got lanes in there that are two ways so cars can, you know, enter, ingress, egress either way, get out of the parking lot safely, go onto the alleyways and then either head north or south onto their, you know, preferred road. So there was a lot of consideration that was put into coming up with these layouts and that's how we came up with the numbers. And these layouts that were prepared, we spent significant time with the city, with your engineers, with your planning consultants, with your departments, with these plans, with these engineered plans. We prepared them. A lot of time was spent, a lot of detail, a lot of conversations, a lot of back and forth. And what you have in front of you this evening are the plans that are best for both of these sites. Best for parking for both Eaton Street and Oxford Street. So what you'll see is that these parking lots are not only laid out in a safe manner, but we're providing landscaping, we're providing nice walls, brick masonry walls, we're providing maple trees, we're providing green belts, a bike rack on the Eaton Street parking. There's a bike rack there with a total of 14 spaces for bikes. We've got, you know, if you look at, you know, just the plans in front of you, for example, on the Oxford Parking Lot, we've got four maples on the front. We've got four maples on the east side. We have a six-foot wall on the west side of the property and we have a four-foot wall on the south side of the property on Oxford. But keep in mind that we have plantings, as you can see on the plans, all along that wall on the Oxford side. So the four feet is plenty of height to shield any headlights from going, you know, south, from cars that are parking in the lot. And then with those plantings there, those are going to exceed the four-foot high wall at some point. So you're going to have additional screening, buffering and noise reduction. The wall on the west side, the ordinance and the city, we agreed at the time of settlement, it's a six-foot high wall. And what's important is, we actually control, or we, I say we, my clients, they control those lots to the west of the Oxford Parking Lot and under the consent judgment, they're required at some specific point in time, we have specific time limits in there, to build brand-new residential construction houses on both of those lots. So, you know, in designing this parking lot, because we own those two lots, we're obviously concerned with the ability to build and sell those lots with a parking lot right next to it. So we took all that into consideration. It's not going to be an issue as far as we're concerned, but because of that, we did provide, you know, additional landscaping, additional green belts, more so than any other parking lot in the city that would be required under the parking ordinance. So we did go above and beyond what's actually required in your P1 ordinance. And the Oxford plan, much work has been put into the layout, the safety, the ingress/egress and all the issues that come along with that. So we would ask for Planning Commission approval of that site plan this evening. Also, with respect to the Eaton Street Parking Lot, under the consent judgment, that provided for 28 parking spaces and that's an add-on to an existing parking that's already there. Now, part of the consent judgment, what happened is the property to the north of us, my clients own the middle lot, Lugo Properties, which is the T-Mobile owners. They own the lot to the east of us and the lot to the west of us. So as part of the resolution, what the city and my clients agreed to do in Lugo Properties, we agreed to split those properties to make them more perpendicular and straight as opposed to, you know, vertical up and down and, you know, the lot between preventing the other two lots from being developed, you know, to realize the best layout and the lot, and the two lots on the middle, same thing preventing the lot, the two lots on the side, I'm sorry, preventing the lot in the middle from being able to develop in the best manner. So what we did is, those properties were split and we combined the properties. So you'll see the Eaton Parking Lot is actually a nice rectangular shape. The parking spaces are in there to meet the ordinance, 28. Again, there's plenty of room in there for maneuverability. The parking spaces are long enough, they meet the ordinance and we have specifically excluded ingress and egress from Eaton Street to allow, you know, or to prevent cars from entering and exiting on that road. So we're in a position now, you know, everyone's aware of COVID, what happened. Fortunately, my client survived, the restaurant stayed in business. But everyone's aware with labor today, materials, contractors, supply chain nightmares, the pricing. We have, after working so hard and long and diligently with the city to achieve these plans, our contractors are ready to go. And you know, you know that it's hard to get contractors today. It's hard to get materials, it's hard to get labor. So we're ready to go. Upon approval tonight, should you grant approval, we're ready to proceed to the next stage, secure our permits and go to work on the projects. If this project is delayed any further, unfortunately, contractors mobilize to another site, then we have to wait for them to finish whatever they're doing to come back. Very likely, we'll lose this construction season. So it's important this evening not only to consider the plans that are presented for final approval, but the situation as it is and the practicalities of trying to get this project off the ground in today's economy, today's construction market and labor market. So with that being said, we're available to answer any questions. I do have a client representative here, our engineer, our landscape architect, and we would, you know, answer any questions you have and respectfully request that approval be given to both site plans this evening so we can proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. So normally, I kind of leave it to you guys to ask questions first, but I think today I would like to go through Kyle Wartman's, Carlisle and Wartman's questions and kind of pinpoint- Carlisle and Wartman's questions and kind of pinpoint answers on those. So I guess I'm going to start there. They have suggested that you replace the burning bush with more native species. Is that, are you willing to do that?
Yeah, landscaping can be modified, that's not an issue. We feel that burning bushes provide more coverage, more density, you know, better noise reduction, sound reduction, light reduction, so. But we have, we can replace with comparable items, you know.
Good. Reconfiguring Eaton to add more buffer to the western property line.
We can't do that because the western, what they want to do, what Carlisle wants to do, they want to take the west side of the parking lot, add five feet of buffering, which does nothing, but that two-lane path now becomes one lane, one-way. That's going to create a lot of internal vehicular circulation problems. So to add five feet of basically nothing and but take away a lane that is very critical to the safety of the circular, of the vehicular circulation in the parking lot, quite frankly, in my opinion, it's not good. It's, and it presents a safety issue. So that's not something we would agree to.
All right, that's the Oxford.
That was the west side of Eaton?
West side of Oxford.
That was the Oxford one. And so then with the Eaton, Eaton one, I believe they suggested trying to reconfigure it so that the land space or green space, instead of being on the north, is more on the west to buffer the neighbors.
Again, we're adding on to an existing parking lot, so as, you know, Kim indicated, we're very limited on what we can do there.
Lot 337 yours, or is that also sold?
Which lot?
Lot 337.
On Oxford?
Our 335, 336 are both indicated as Lugo Properties. Was 337 also sold, or is that?
Nothing was sold. As far as Eaton parking, we switched, we switched properties.
I'm looking at up here.
So she's talking about this space right here.
Yeah, I am.
That's Lugo.
I guess I'm a little bit confused what's.
So that's owned by Lugo?
Yeah. Yeah, that's Lugo.
That's.
That'll be part of the Lugo property.
I'm just trying to think of a way to tack on two spots onto there, and then you could lop off the two spots on the, on the end.
That's not our property. Lugo's going to own that property.
So you did sell it?
No, it's part of the swap. It's, there's a restated collaboration agreement. The properties were swapped out. In order for us to be able to, see, because Lugo, if you look at the middle of our parking lot, that's a residential lot that goes north and south. That was owned by Lugo. So we had to take the bottom half of their lot and give them the top half of our lots in order to be able to create our vertical, our rectangular drive, parking lot there.
All right, moving on. The masonry walls, the four-foot parts, increasing them to five feet. How do you, would you be agreeable to that?
First of all, I don't think it looks good. Four feet is more than adequate to shield from the headlights. And because of the plantings there, it's going to surpass the wall height. How tall are those plantings along Oxford?
You have to come to the microphone so the people at home, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sorry. This is our landscape architect, Jim Epping.
Hi, appreciate your time. The masonry walls scheduled to be 48 inches or four feet tall. The ornamental grasses behind it will grow to a height of about four and a half to five foot. We've worked on projects like this in the past, and where we had, where we see five-foot walls, we start to get complaints about safety and blind spots behind those taller walls where the grasses provide some additional shielding but still allow people to see through. So similar projects, we've been more successful with a 48-inch wall and then the ornamental grasses behind it.
Reducing the light poles, I think that was on the Eaton one.
On Eaton?
Yeah.
Sure. I mean, we have them there for safety reasons. If you want them reduced, we can reduce them. And keep in mind the light, we have the cut sheets for the lights. We actually have them, we're going to submit them tomorrow, but that's something for staff to review. But these lights are all facing, none of them are facing towards a residential. They're all facing towards the parking lot.
And they're, and they're going to be shielded, right?
Yeah, yeah, they're state-of-the-art light fixtures, so. If you want, if you want some removed, we'll, you know, we'll remove them.
Okay. And I think you, you kind of hinted towards this earlier, but do you have an approximate timetable of construction for this?
I'm sorry?
An approximate timetable for the construction of these.
Yeah, we're ready. We're ready to go. As soon as we get it permitted, the engineers have to get final approval, but they've been reviewing the plans all along, so we don't anticipate any delay there. And in fact, HRC has recommended approval, subject to some minor conditions that we can easily satisfy in the next couple of days. And, you know, we're ready to proceed. We would like to get this in this season because the intention is to do both of them at the same time. Even though the consent judgment allows us to do one at a time with Eaton first, Oxford second, the crews are going to be out there. It makes, you know, economic sense. Once they're mobilized out there, we'll have them work in both sites and, you know, we'll get, well, we need to get in this season before you get your frost laws and your snow and all that, and the weather elements, you know, that delay things, so.
I think that's what I have to ask questions on. Do you, does anyone else have any questions?
I mean, I think for me, and I'm playing a little bit of catch-up as far as being on the commission, but as far as being a citizen and following, I'm aware of the whole situation. Correct me if I'm wrong, but this, this would bring you guys up to 78 dedicated parking spaces?
Fifty-four, plus I think we have 26 or 28 at the restaurant, 28 at the restaurant, so.
All right, I mean, just.
Fifty-four, 72.
Okay. And, well, somewhere, yeah. So I mean, the math I crunched looking at the plans came to 78, so we're somewhere floating around there. In the application, it said that, and again, some of this information might be a little dated, but your highest shift, you had approximately 30 employees working?
Well, if you're talking pre-COVID.
No, I understand, that's what I'm saying, like, this might be a little dated. You know, I guess just for me, what I reference, because it seems as though what we're kind of reviewing and discussing is some asks, but we're really kind of in a formality position with this one. The consent judgment does reference, you know, the plaintiff putting forward some reasonable action in trying to cut back on employees and/or visitors parking in the neighborhoods. It's kind of why we're, part of why we're trying to do this. I mean, is there some sort of a plan or commitment to that? And I realize, like, it's, I have employees of my own, I tell them to do things, sometimes they do it, sometimes they don't do it. You have customers coming in who are going to spend money on your products. The last thing you want to do is make them angry by telling them not to do this and not to do that. But it's written in the consent judgment, along with a bunch of other stuff. So if the client can speak a little bit to, you know, this parking, this dedicated parking will help alleviate some things, but it also still could lead to some other issues.
We don't think so. The fact that those parking spaces will be there, the people will naturally park, and they're close enough to the building, you know. So especially now with, you know, we're at reduced hours, you know. We, the restaurant operates from four to nine, five days a week, you know, whereas before it was open lunch through dinner, later hours, you know. So we don't anticipate any problem. Who knows, five months, six months, 10 months from now? Hopefully, things return back to normal as far as restaurant, the restaurant business in general. You know, but right now, you know, there, I mean, there's no staff. It's hard to staff a restaurant, it's hard to staff anything in the service industry. So, you know, we don't really anticipate any problems. This consent judgment does have language. We've always been committed to people parking where they're supposed to park. Obviously, as you indicated, we can't dictate where someone parks, but that's the whole point of these parking lots, you know, is to create a situation where they do have an alternative to parking in the streets, you know, or parking elsewhere, so.
Are you good?
Yeah, sorry.
I have a few questions about the Oxford parking lot. The wall height, you, you didn't really give us an absolutely can't-be-done, the five-foot wall height. And I'm looking at our planner's recommendation, and he's recommending the five-foot wall height. You indicated it was a safety.
It can be.
Line of sight issue. But if there's only ingress and egress out of the alley where there won't be any walls, I think that alleviates some of the safety concern on that end.
Well, what's a safety concern that you have?
Well, you articulated line of sight as being safely, but what I heard primarily was unsightly, is your opinion.
No, it's, to me, it doesn't make sense because you have a nice four-foot wall with plantings. If you put a five-foot wall, that's all you're going to see is a wall. You see what I'm saying? So if you're, if you're a resident on the south, looking north, you see the four-foot wall, it's a decorative, it's a brick masonry wall, but then when those plantings grow, you're going to have those plantings there too. Otherwise, you're looking at just a wall, you know, just personally, to me, it doesn't make sense, so.
But it, but it is something you may be amenable to.
Yeah, sure.
As far as the plantings, and maybe this is a question for your landscaping consultant, but I'm looking at the Oxford Road parking lot, and it looks like a good third of the parking lot, there's only two feet between the wall and the pavement, is that?
I'm sorry, there's only what?
Two feet. Am I reading that right?
I don't understand, two feet on the interior or on the exterior?
Between the wall and the beginning of the pavement for the parking lot. It looks like, I'm looking at plan.
Is it sheet seven or 10?
Thank you.
Yeah, the sheets are, but Jim can answer.
So based on one of the earlier reviews, that was adjusted to both create a landscape bed as opposed to just concrete paving, which it was previously, and then to have both an overhang for larger cars and more compact cars. So the first on the, the south side of Oxford, the first one, two, three, four, have a two-foot overhang, and then as you move further west, they go to a four-foot overhang.
For the compact cars.
Correct.
But I'm concerned about landscape, what can you possibly plant there? I mean, you're showing the same shrubs that you would plant on the west side there.
You're exactly right, and it is a concern. Obviously, landscape is a living organism, and so we do try and make sure that from assault condition from everything else. What we're proposing there is a consistent row of what we call coral forester reed grass. So that's an ornamental grass as opposed to like a shrub. What's nice about that is it is fairly columnar or columnar, and it'll grow up almost in a, in a tube-like fashion. It doesn't branch out, it doesn't get too tall, and it also, in the wintertime, recedes down and then ultimately gets cut by the landscape maintenance company and then regrows in the spring. So every year, it grows, it grows rapidly to that four and a half or five foot. But what's nice about it is it does die down. You could put snow on it, the salt won't hurt it. If we go with other woody shrubs, number one, they get too big, to your point, and number two, the salt would more than likely damage it. Originally, from a maintenance point of view, especially because we were behind that wall, we had it as a concrete enlarged curb. We think that that actually makes more sense from a maintenance point of view. You don't obviously have problems with salt and snow, but we understood the request for additional landscape, and so we, we looked for ways, creative ways to do that.
So from an aesthetic standpoint, how tall would those grasses get?
Generally speaking, about four and a half or five foot tall for that variety of grass.
And how, at what point does it get? You said it grows fast, but how, like, what time, or what's, in the middle of summer, it's reaching its max, or?
Well, you know, they get cut down in the fall to about a height of about a foot. In the spring, let's say, March, April, they'll start to green up, and by Memorial Day, they're probably, you know, just based on the ones at my house, by Memorial Day, they are probably three foot tall. And by, you know, June, July, they're up at that four and a half or five. So they, they grow, you know, much quicker than a maple tree or something like that, which would take years to grow that much.
So from a buffering noise standpoint, they really don't do anything?
They really provide the aesthetics. The wall would provide any buffering from a noise or headlight point of view. They're trying, I guess, soften the area with additional landscape.
And is that what's proposed along the entire perimeter of the parking lot?
No, just along that southern perimeter are the reed grasses. And then on the southwest and the northwest side, we, right now, we're proposing a hedge of burning bush. We have a little bit wider area, it's a more durable shrub. Cars aren't going to be parking into it. That was another consideration is the grass is pliable, so if someone, you know, comes in a little too deep, they're not going to hurt the car or the plant. The burning bushes are on the west, and they'll provide more of a hedge so those don't die down. We did hear the, the comment from Carlisle Wartman to consider an, a native species, and we can look at that. But again, in a tough environment with snow, salt, sun reflection, our concern, of course, is, is long-term care. We want to put these in, we want them to look really good for the next 10, 12, 15, 20 years. And so we chose plants that'll do that as opposed to some plants that might be more native but may not survive those conditions.
Where do you intend the snow to go on Oxford?
There's a snow area on Oxford.
Those two little corners?
Yeah, the corner.
What, two little corners?
Snow storage area, I'm, I'm sorry, on the Eaton parking lot, and then on Oxford.
Oxford, again, would be those, those corner areas as well. Those burning bushes, I mentioned, are more durable, can take that snow, and so the, the snow could be piled up in those areas as well as in the islands closer to the alley.
I'm sorry, let it in there, was that?
Yeah, that's.
Questions for now?
That's fine.
I think mine were answered.
Hey, I'm going to open up for citizens' comments now.
Thank you.
Yes. Again, I will ask you, first, as some comments, to come to the podium, state your name and city of residence. Keep your comments to three minutes. We won't engage you, but we'll take notes and try and address them as we go along.
Hi, evening. My name's Robert Robinette, I live on Oxford, about seven houses down. If you count Westborne, I'm nine houses down with a space. And because of all this, I don't know if you guys have been down Oxford, but since they dropped those buildings, I have a beautiful view of Woodward right now from my living room. So, you know, I, you know, a little snark, but, you know. So noise and sound is going to be a big concern of mine, so. So addressing the 48-inch wall that's on Oxford, that's facing, that's parallel to the street, right? Between the, and Eaton, so between those two parking lots, there are 26 spaces that go perpendicular to that where people are pulling in with their light shining towards the houses, right? 48 inches, four feet, so, state of Michigan, their headlight regulation is from 22 inches up to 54 inches, right? So right there, that is way above the law, that wall site. F-150s, a four-wheel-drive F-150, is 45 inches is their standard headlight height, right? Which is just cusp-ing that wall. You know, the, the plants that they're going to buffer the light, they're cutting down in the fall, they said, right? So eight months, while cars are pulling in there, they're going to be after dark, right? So those, those shrubs that they're cutting down, even if they were there, aren't going to make much of a difference. It's just, I don't get what's another foot, right? You know, and if they're asking what we would prefer, I'd rather look at a wall than inside their parking lot, right? I'd rather have that wall that's going to be there, that's not going to die, right, potentially, or only lasts 10 years as long as the life of these plants. That's there, right? I plan on being there longer than 10 years, right? I'm assuming they plan on being in business another 10 years at least, so. And then just one last thing, the, right, in the consent judgment, it says the Planning Commission shall not have authority to require any modification that's inconsistent with the consent judgment or reduces the number of parking spaces. But you are allowed to use applicable city ordinance. I believe there is a city ordinance that does talk about the wall size and can require up to four. up to 56 inches. I don't know exactly what that one is off the top of my head, I forgot to write it down, but the unwillingness of this applicant, for, we've been dealing with for 11 years, right, to refuse because they don't think it's gonna look good, even though they don't have to look at it, to add another foot to that wall, is just, I just don't understand. Is it just saving a few extra bucks or not? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Jonas Reimer, I live on Harvard Avenues. Personally, I believe that we should completely get rid of all minimum parking requirements, and this isn't something that doesn't happen in the United States. Recently, the city of Ann Arbor got rid of theirs. I believe that we should be encouraging more cycling or walking. We should be moving Berkeley more towards a people-centered city. For example, 12-mile road is four lanes despite that's being where the downtown is. Now, I personally believe that's a little ludicrous, and we have a bike lane on Coolidge, and, anyway, to sum it up, I personally believe that we should focus more on trying to have residents walk or bike to this area instead of drive, because, believe it or not, Berkeley's pretty small land size and it is doable. I ride my bike everywhere, and I even rode it here. But to sum it up, I personally believe that it's just better to move towards less car-centric development, and not only that, but these lots could be rezoned for housing, businesses, anything else, and that could, you know, all right, I think I'm, I think I've said what I needed to say for this one, and anyone else wants to know if that's fine.
Thank you.
I tried. Hi, my name is Sean Sveda, I live at 1047 Eaton Road, and I guess I wanna focus my comments here on the first paragraph of the letter to the Planning Commission by the Community Development Director. It states an opinion about the collaboration judgment that is in complete opposition to the stated legal opinion of the city attorney and the beliefs of the mayor and the city council when they voted to approve the judgment in January of 2020. During the council meeting on January 6, 2020, Dean Smith, a former Planning Commission member, someone who sat in your seat and, you know, fully understands the role of this body, addressed the council with precisely the concern that a consent judgment would negate the ability of the Planning Commission to do their job, right? So somebody who is familiar with your role said that was his concern. So whenever I'm quoting someone now, I'm quoting their direct words that I transcribed from the city's posted YouTube videos, I encourage you to go back and view them yourself just to make sure that I'm telling the truth, but this is what I'm doing, so. In response to comments, including those by Dean Smith, Mayor Turbick asked the city attorney, Mr. Sterren, has been brought up a concern a couple of times regarding the Planning Commission being bypassed and losing their power. Attorney Sterren replied by reading a part of the draft consent judgment that states no changes that can reduce the number of parking spaces, and then, this is a direct quote, "That is the only limitation on the Planning Commission, that they can't turn a 26-spot parking lot into 14, but they otherwise will be required to submit to the full and rigorous site plan review and approval process." Okay? After more citizens spoke and also expressed similar concerns, council member Baker asked Attorney Sterren, he said, "I too share concerns around the role of the Planning Commission. Any other clarification you can provide as to the degree which they can represent our community's best interests." Attorney Sterren replied, "Because of the way things are often done, quite frankly, the way that the plaintiff wanted it, was that the Planning Commission would be completely eliminated from the process and that through this consent judgment, give the final site plan approval. This council is not willing to do that because you appreciate and respect the good work the Planning Commission does." And then, a little bit later, Attorney Sterren says, "The Planning Commission would do what it always does, which is to massage, cajole, and require and condition things and try to come up with the best possible parking lot development." So Councilmember Baker then responds, "To that point, it could be interpreted through some of the comments we've heard that their hands are tied behind their backs." And this is what Attorney Sterren says, "I disagree." He says, "I read the relevant provisions, will have to agree to disagree on those points, I stand by what I have advised. So the legal opinion of the attorney who represented the city in litigation is clear. The only restriction on the Planning Commission is that they not require changes that result in fewer parking spaces than the stated minimum. It's also clear that the mayor and the city council wanted the Planning Commission to retain full authority in any consent judgment. During the same dialogue between Councilmember Baker and Attorney Sterren, Baker said, 'What has been indicated in prior conversations is that we entrust the Planning Commission to do the great job that they always do.'" And then he follows up and says, "Thank you for the clarification."
I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap it up because we've hit three minutes now.
This is important. Thank you for the clarification. Again, the importance for the Planning Commission, as you stated, is it really hinges my vote on this. And then later, Mayor Turbick, when talking about this, says, "Without that clarifying language, I am very hesitant, without knowing that I can say yes to all the people who came up here and talked, yes, the Planning Commission has control, I have serious reservations." So eventually, the council decided to postpone voting because they wanted changes. These changes were requested specifically because of concerns about the role of the Planning Commission. An attorney Sterren asked for clarification. He says, "Is the intention then to approach the plaintiff, amend the consent judgment to eliminate the reference to the concept plan?" And the mayor replied, "We want to make sure the Planning Commission has full control, and there are multiple audible agreements to that." And then Sterren replies, "And that would do it." So the mayor replies, "Okay." So the easiest way to ensure that our Planning Commission...
Okay, I'm gonna have to actually stop you now because now we're closing in on five minutes.
Why?
Because our rules are that citizen comments are for three minutes.
So I can give this to someone else and they can continue reading?
If that's what you would like to do, yes, you can do that.
And you would prefer that to just hearing the rest of it?
This is the rules.
Can I offer my minutes to Sean?
No, I, one person, three minutes. I've already kind of gone over that.
Well, you can keep reading it, it's all written out.
I mean, I do think we've got, we've grasped that council did want the Planning Commission to retain some.
Okay, so you can start right here, right?
So Mayor Turbick states, "We want to..."
I do need your name, though.
Oh, I'm so sorry. My name's Diane Chikini, I also live on Oxford, and I've lived there for 30 years, and I've never minded living there until recently. And that's because of the car bar and all this contest, contentious discussion around the parking lots.
So then the mayor says, "Sure."
So the mayor says, "Okay, so the easiest way to ensure that our Planning Commission will have full control over the site plan, that's what we want to do? Yes, clear, multiple audible agreements followed. The vote to postpone passed unanimously. During the following special council meeting on January 23, 2020, while describing what the CJ accomplished, Mayor Turbick clearly stated that he believed the CJ projected the PC. Major Turbick states, 'The Planning Commission does explicitly have control, and the concept plan has been removed. So as you can see, the position of mayor and city council are also clear. They trusted that you, the PC, would have full authority over the site plan and never would have voted to approve the CJ if they believed otherwise. The legal opinion of the city attorney and the publicly stated positions of the mayor and council carry far, far more weight than the lone opposing opinion of the CDD. Therefore, the PC should disregard the CDD's opinion. The PC has full control over the aesthetics of these lots so long as the required number of parking spaces are delivered. Furthermore, given that the CDD's recommendation to approve was made based on a faulty premise, that recommendation should also be ignored. With regard to the aesthetic standards for the proposed parking lots, thereto, we have public comments from the mayor to guide us. During the January 6, 2022 meeting, Mayor Turbick explained, 'All of our talks were trying to come to a resolution that took care of the problem, that protected the neighborhood, and made things that looked great. And in the January 23, 2020 council meeting, Mayor Turbick was very clear on what he expected to see. I firmly believe that we can, with this agreement, resolve the parking issue, but I think there is a way, certainly a way, that we can preserve the character of the neighborhood.' He went on to say, 'The ability to not make it look like it's just a parking lot, and I have full confidence in our Planning Commission's ability to do that within our ordinances. But if there are trees, and if you look across the street at Westborne, because that was pointed out as well, where there is a setback and there are some trees that make it look more a part of a neighborhood, there is a way that can happen and preserve the integrity of the neighborhood. The site plan, the site plan was submitted here, excuse me, the site plan submitted here was essentially created in 2016, and does not by any reasonable measure conform to the Westborne standard set by the mayor to preserve the character of the neighborhood. Therefore, I believe this should be a short meeting. The PC should quickly reject this site plan and explain to the applicant that they need to come back with something that actually attempts to conform to the mayor's Westborne standard. Bear in mind that the applicant, to this point, has effectively responded to all suggested modifications by asserting that they cannot be made in a way that retains the required number of parking spaces. This behavior should be expected to continue. The bar must be far higher than simple assertions. At a minimum, they should be required to show their work.' And I would like to add that...
Quickly.
I echo Mr. Robinette's sentiments about, you know, what we see. I can see Woodward now, I can see the pet supply store, I can see all those things from my, the front of my house. And this year, the Dream Cruise was, it was insufferable. It was so loud, and I've always loved the Dream Cruise. It's a big block party, it's a great way for the city to invite outsiders and for, you know, neighbors from Berkeley to gather and, you know, have a great time. But it wasn't that for me this year, and I'm talking about from May all the way through the weekend for the noise.
Thank you.
Hi, so good evening, Planning Commission. I'm Tara Hayes, I live at 1021 Oxford, adjacent to the Vincetta Garage, and I'm here tonight to ask you to exercise your power as planning commissioners and to withhold approval of the site plans for the Vincetta Garage Eaton and Oxford parking lots until every aspect of this project has been precisely detailed on the site plans themselves. This is the power you have as planning commissioners, and it is the power stipulated to you by law in the consent judgment. This consent judgment was approved by the January 2020 City Council on the advice of City Attorney John Sterren, with the express understanding that the Planning Commission have and use its power to create, as Mayor Turbick described, practically a park to the Westborne standard on both Eaton and Oxford. As many of you are not serving members of the Planning Commission in January of 2020, I would like to reference back everything that Sean was just indicating, and Diane continued for him. And it is very clear to me, based on the questions that you've asked, that you have not seen that meeting, and that you've not even read the full 95 pages that were submitted as the packet today, because some of your questions were answered in the packet, all right? So I'll come back to that because there's supposed to be discussion, and I expect that we'll discuss, but this was public comment. As residents of Eaton and Oxford and neighbors to the Vincetta Garage, we, like the city itself, have a 10-plus-year history with the Vincetta Garage. This history begins with the Vincetta Garage's failure to comply with their business license, and it continues with the Vincetta Garage's repeated failures to comply with shared parking agreements, with city orson since, with previously approved site plans. In short, the Vincetta Garage has a 10-year track record of not complying. The power to require the Vincetta Garage to comply rests with you. Before us tonight is the latest submission from the Vincetta Garage of their site plans for the parking lots on Eaton and Oxford roads. It is the same submission that was disallowed as a concept from the consent judgment, and it is the same submission that does not respond to the parameters of the consent judgment, the suggestions of Carlisle Wartman, city agencies and residents, the expectation of city council and residents, or Vincetta Garage's only own publicly stated promises and agreements. Either then, these site plans are remiss or lacking in the information necessary to prove. Regardless, until substantive and precise site plan revisions are made, approval must be postponed, so all of these things can get into the plan. As has been the case for the past 10-plus years, we are still not in a rush, 10 years without these parking lots. Clearly, we can wait to do this right. We are, however, required to get this right, and this includes, but is not limited, to correcting the internal consistencies in the plans. One of the things you guys asked for was the four-foot wall that's on one plan, while in another section, it says they'll do the five-foot wall, and in comments in response to a July memo from Carlisle Wartman, it also says they'll agree to do the five-foot wall. These are all in the plans that you got in preparation for this meeting. And that's just one example, right? So I would then say we have to correct the internal consistencies in the plans, adhere to the city ordinances, especially Chapter 138, re-wall heights, 130, re-trees, bushes and shrubs, the consent judgment, re-lighting, and of course, seeing samples and section cuts for this proposal. That 48, right? So we have 48 to 56 inches is required from the highest level, and inside these plans, they're raising the parking lot, which means they're measuring that 48 from this, which then, as Commissioner Hamamay mentioned with her question on the inside, raises up, which means we're already further on that, and all of that is in this plan, all right? So I'm going to reserve my specific pieces because I would like to be able to go through all the pages that were submitted with this packet and sort of show you where all those pieces are lying out, but I'm, again, expecting that'll be part of this, again, conversation. So what I'd like for us to do is, of course...
I'm gonna ask you to wrap it up.
... postpone this, and so we can substantially revise these plans, okay? So importantly, as with every plan reviewed by this board, the Planning Commission has full power to demand the reworking of these plans in accordance with its vision and to set conditions of approval and the broad discretion to delineate the aesthetics of these Eaton and Oxford light. Please use that power to deliver Eaton and Oxford the lots that we have been promised again and again and again by the city and Vincetta Garage. These site plans cannot be approved until every aspect of the project is detailed on the plans themselves. 10 years of history.
Okay, thank you.
History demonstrates that it is not in the plan, it's not going to get done, so it needs to get done. It needs to be in the plan.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Gabrielle Sveda, also 1047 Eaton. I came here with a live parking update. They claim that their customers will love the lot and will no longer park on the street. Eaton, as of, you know, leaving my house, is completely full, all the way to Fulford, while there's five empty spaces in their existing lot, so I question that, first of all. Another question is, we have a lot of landscaping here on the back of the lot that faces the new urgent care slash former bank parking lot. Why all this investment in landscaping while we're shortchanging the neighborhood side of the lot? A lot of landscaping to face another parking lot there. But I do just wanna make the point, please, Sean, you know, spent an intense amount of time to bring to your attention the details that the attorney provided on the planning, for the powers of the Planning Commission, that's something that we all invested a lot of time in preserving when we initially saw that consent judgment. We had so many concerns, apologize for not having a prepared statement. And if you have any doubt about what you have the capability to request, demand, require as part of the Planning Commission, please table this today, consult with the attorney, review the meeting where the council agreed to the consent judgment under these conditions that the Planning Commission would have control over the final appearance of the lot, and, you know, the mayor stated his position, the council members stated their permission. The mayor specifically stated that his approval of the consent judgment on behalf of the citizens hinged, he used the word "hinged"... citizens hinged, he used the word hinged, on the fact that we are preserving the power of the planning commission. So please disregard any statement that was provided by, I'm sorry, I don't remember your title, about what the planning commission has control to do based on the text, because we did get the legal opinion of the city attorney. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think that's the end of citizens' comments, and we will move to discussion. Um, I think one of the things that was very much focused on was the planning commission having power. And, and yes, like, we, I think, and I don't want to speak for her, but one of those things that we lack are very strong rulings of landscaping, right? So we have to go by what we have done, what we've held other parking lots and properties to. We can hold them to that standard. We can't hold them above and beyond what we would hold anybody else to. So we do have the, some ability to massage that. Um, and then the wall height, which I'm sure we'll discuss some more. I think I, I got the main, the main gist of the comments. Kristin, do you have anything to add at this moment?
I don't think there were any specific questions to address.
Okay. Discussion. Anybody want to start?
I'll start. I was not, I, this is my second planning commission meeting. I was not privy to the history, other than looking at that brick house on Oxford when I was looking for a house in twenty sixteen and being concerned about what was gonna happen next door. That's really the extent of my involvement up until this day. I read every page of this packet, because I was very interested and I knew that this was gonna be concerning. So please rest assured, I read every page. I may have asked questions intentionally to alert my commissioners, my fellow commissioners about my position, but I read every page of this packet. I trust our planners, our engineers, our consultants, we hire them for a reason. Our planners had essentially four big concerns that I share, and that's the parking lot configuration, the lack of landscaping and buffering. I would really have loved to see some engineer drawings about the ability to reconfigure, particularly on the Eaton Road lot, where you have a lot of buffering and landscaping on the northern end and very little on the eastern end. I appreciate that you did show, you know, a sketch of some sort showing how those parking spots would work, but without knowing dimensions, without having an engineer do that, I would have really appreciated to see that it's not doable, because sitting here today, I feel like we would be remiss to not really know definitively whether it was doable and still meet the parking minimums that's required by the consent judgment. As far as the, the wall along Oxford, I wouldn't, my vote, one of six, I would require that to be five feet. That, to me, that's a, that would have to be a requirement. The other concern raised by the planners was the overall landscaping deficiency, needing some more interior landscaping, which, again, if this can be reconfigured to eat up some of that, that space on the northern end, or just reconfigured, maybe there is a possibility for additional landscaping, and then the reduction of the number of light poles, which, which you've indicated today is not an issue. Those are my comments, those are my thoughts and how I sit today. I appreciate the comments about the statements that were made at previous council meetings, but as an attorney, the consent judgment is the law of the land. We are bound by that consent judgment. I agree that it says that we have, that we do have the ability to apply our ordinances, but it's hard to do that when we're required to follow a certain number of parking spots. It limits our ability to require certain things. If they're telling us, and their engineers are telling us, this is the only way to do it, and we can't fit any more landscaping. And so that's the stru-, internal struggle that I'm having here is, yes, I would love to see more landscaping, and again, had there been an engineer who reviewed this and said it cannot be done, period, I think I'd be in a different, I'd be sitting here different right now, but right now, that's my concern.
I, I totally agree with everything you just said. I do also wish there was a engineered drawing, not, I don't want to call it a sketch plan, but a lackluster drawing that was provided with us. I also feel the landscaping, there are a number of concerns with that, and if we're comparing it to other parking lots, such as Westbourne, which is very close, that is very well landscaped and almost, I don't want to say hidden, but fits very well into the ne-, that's my neighborhood. I look at Westbourne when I sit on the porch, and it's, you can't tell that that's a parking lot, even between the homes. So I do wish that there was more landscaping and buffering for our residents who live there. Woodward does get very noisy, and I'm also off Woodward, so it does get noisy. I leave town for Dream Cruise, but it does get noisy. I wish there was more of that. The light pole, I, I mean, that was a recommendation, it seems like that's agreeable. The fence, or the, I'm sorry, the, the wall, I, I do wish it was higher, and there was a sample of it, is it just cinder block fence? So I, I wish there was a sample of the color. We've asked other applicants for that in the past, and I don't, that's not included in our packet, even, even color drawings, renderings. So I wish that was also included. I feel like there are some inconsistencies with the amount of time that's passed since the original applicant, application came through. So that is my thoughts for now.
Vice Chair Kempner, if I may. So Commissioner Patterson, we don't have a sample of the wall, but if you'll look at sheet LP two, it does reference a limestone cap and red brick to be similar to the brick facade of the Vincetta Garage building. And that was one of the standards that was specifically laid out in the consent judgment.
Thank you. So is it required to match what's there, existing?
It would be required to be similar, so a red brick in a similar tone, it wouldn't have to be identical.
Thank you.
Are you good?
Yeah.
I'll go next. So I, I'll echo what my previous two commissioners stated. Would love to see a little bit more, I, I guess I'm, I'm coming into this late to the game as well. I, end of, end of twenty twenty, so I, I missed the, the early twenty twenty meeting and obviously everything back in twenty sixteen. I'd love to see a little bit, I, I'd like to see a little bit more of the background of what, how the number of spaces were determined. It seems like that should have been reviewed by the city, and at that time, it would, it seemed like they would have raised those issues. So I don't know if that was just something that, hey, we can do twenty-eight spaces and we can do twenty-six spaces here. Don't worry about it, we, we, we have it laid out. I'd like to see, I'd like to see the background of how those number of spots came to be, because I feel like we are tied to the consent agenda, you know? We really don't have a whole lot of basis to argue the layout and such. I think the, the screen wall along the right-of-way, I found it in the zoning ordinance, it says four feet or four to eight feet along the right-of-way, but then it also says that the planning commission can, can determine what would be, make more sense. A five-foot wall along the right-of-way seems that the, the homeowners, adjacent homeowners would like to see that. I have no issue with requiring that as a, you know, five-foot wall, that makes sense to me. That's about all I had.
I kind of agree with your sentiments, that's really all I had. The landscaping reason for going over the four feet isn't gonna help ninety percent of the time when it's needed, you know? Like in the winter, that's when the, it gets dark at five o'clock and the headlights are gonna be shining, so I would like to see a five-foot wall there, I would like to see additional landscaping. I, I don't know exactly what, I, I read the consent judgment, I read all of this. I don't know exactly what, we can't change because of the consent judgment, other than the number of parking spots. I don't think there was very many requirements there that were tying our hands, other than the parking spaces, so.
But the parking spaces are a huge, a huge thing, you know?
Right, no, that, right, no, that's what I'm saying, but like, there's, I guess I just, can we say we need to see, we want to see engineer drawings of an alternative?
I mean, I think the only thing that we're really limited by are, are the number of spaces, that the access has to be from the alley, and then what our zoning allows us to ask, which I think is the biggest issue.
Right.
I would just say that I, I appreciate the gentleman's comments with the headlight heights and things of that nature, you know, the homework helps. The five-foot wall is something I support completely with that in mind, but I'm a broken record as far as, you know, everybody else's sentiment at the table.
Um, and I tend to agree. I find the landscaping, especially on Oxford, to be lacking, and I do understand that, you know, there, there's limited, but I think that, I think Carlisle Wortman's concept of turning it into a one-way and adding that little bit of landscaping there, while not like life-altering, it seems like a fairly easy way to go, I can compromise, I can do that. And we can go, you know, literally, we've tried to give it as much landscaping as physically possible. When I think of what we have asked recently from the marijuana businesses that have come in front of us, and it's the same thing, like, we have the same landscape thing that we can ask from them, we have also asked for updated, a little more beefed-up landscaping. Our master plan talks about beefed-up landscaping. And so I, I would, I'm definitely disappointed by that. I think there are some things that have been suggested that you could do. The wall, again, that seems so easy. If the neighbors want a five-foot wall, you know, make it a five-foot wall. I, I, I don't know why that's an argument, and yes, the, the grass isn't gonna help, except in those days where it's light till late, and it's not quite such an issue. So I, I tend to agree, I, I tend to agree with everybody else. I'm also really worried on that Oxford part, that that, those little areas are not gonna hold your snow, because it's almost all parking lots, which in my personal experience means piling it up against that fence, right against all the neighbor property line right there.
And technically, the, that, the drive aisle on the west side of the Oxford lot is not wide enough, it's only twenty feet. I, I believe the ordinance says twenty-four for a two-way.
For a two-way, it does.
So that is technically not, not meeting ordinance. Under the current, under the current configuration, it is not currently meeting ordinance.
I can look into that further.
Does the, can we ask the applicant? Had you consulted with an engineer about the alternate plan? Had you, I'm, I'm very interested, and honestly, I don't want to vote no on this, I don't. I just, I need to feel comfortable that it can't be done otherwise.
Are you talking about the parking lot configurations?
Yeah.
Yeah, those were all discussions we had during the litigation and facilitation and negotiation process. There were multiple sketches and plans that went back and forth. These, we didn't just come up with twenty-eight and twenty-six. Those were negotiated spaces based upon all the negotiations, the sketches that were provided in litigation as part of discovery, you know, that, we didn't just, they, they are not arbitrary numbers, is all I can tell you.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate that, but I looked at, some of the documents reflect a request from our engineer that you provide alternate plans so that it can be reviewed.
We provided the sketches that have dimensions, you can see those don't work, they reduce the number of spaces. So we're trying to work within the, the twenty-eight and twenty-six spaces.
So can we put the alternate plans up?
I, I just want to caution, this is a site plan review, okay? So we meet your parking ordinance requirements. Now, I understand there's suggestions from Carlisle Wortman, they're not requirements under your ordinance. We entertain those suggestions, we're willing to work with the city, we have been working with the city, but this is not a wish list where, okay, you know, something may be better than what we have, but if we meet the ordinance, you know, we meet the ordinance, you know? So it can't be where now everything is, is, you know, thrown aside and we have to reconfigure our parking lot, you want more landscaping, you want, you know, different layouts. We're past that. The consent judgment is entered with the court, okay? So we're not gonna go back and reconfigure the parking lots, I can, I can tell you that, okay? These lots, there was so much time and, and numerous plans that were put into them, and that's how we came up with these numbers.
But we also, as planning commissioners, have to be concerned about our residents and adjacent property owners. And if our engineer is telling us there's not enough buffering-
Your engineer is not telling you that, your engineer is not telling you that. Your engineer approved, recommended approval of the site plan.
But he did say-
Is it the planner?
The planner.
Oh, sorry, Carlisle Wortman, the planner.
The planner made a suggestion, not a requirement, there's a difference.
But he's telling us that there is not sufficient buffering.
To meet our ordinance.
It, it does meet your ordinance. He, it was a suggestion.
I mean, we kind of decide whether it meets our ordinance, based on whether-
No, no, you don't kind of decide, it, it meets the ordinance or it doesn't. It's not a discretionary thing.
The landscaping is. And so are, like, design materials. We decide if they, if they match the way they are supposed to match.
And, but please, please be cognizant of the fact that to get the parking spaces that were allowed, we're obviously limited in what we can do on our landscaping.
I, I, yes.
Yeah, we've done, we've tried to do as much as we can do to make these parking lots look like, you know, they're not parking lots. Now, obviously, a parking lot's a parking lot, there's only so much you can do, we can all agree to that. So, you know, we've provided as much landscaping and green belts and trees outside of the parking lot that we're able to do, you know, with, with the, you know, twenty-eight and twenty-six parking spaces.
I guess my very direct question is, what have you done, from a due diligence standpoint, to determine you cannot reconfigure these parking spaces and get the required number of par-, or the number of parking spaces? I want to hear, did you sit with an engineer?
Yeah, our engineer's here.
Okay.
He can come up-
Can we, can we maybe talk to him?
He was involved, I, I'm telling you over and over what we did during the litigation, okay?
So I'm not so much-
There were numerous sketches, numerous layouts, so you know.
I understand that, but it's not attached to the consent judgment.
It's not part of the consent judgment.
I know.
That's how we came up with those numbers.
I know, but what I'm trying to say to you, if it was attached to the consent judgment, I would agree with you that the configuration is what it is, it's part of the, the law of the land, but it's not. The only thing in the consent judgment is the number of parking spaces. So I need to make sure that I'm doing my due diligence and understanding that you have done everything you can do to evaluate whether it can be reconfigured and still meet the number of parking spots. And I'm sitting here right now and I'm still not convinced.
Well, we did that during the negotiation process, so you know, but our engineer's here to answer any technical questions you have relative to configuration.
Hello, Pat McWilliams from Waterford Township, uh, used to live here in Berkeley many years ago, grew up here. But anyway, as far as the layout, you, you referred to this a few times, is you want an engineered layout. This is a dimensioned layout. Yes, it's a sketch, it wasn't- This is a dimensioned layout, yes, it's a sketch, it wasn't, we didn't, 'cause we were asked to do it at the last minute, we did not put it into CAD to make it look pretty, but those, that is a dimensioned layout, and it shows clearly that, because the suggestion was made to make it angled parking, that you lose like five spaces, it just doesn't fit, it's just the way it is.
You did this, Pat?
Yes, I did this, this is a dimensioned layout, and the other one, same thing. The other one, Oxford, we were limited, if you wanna flip that one up for a minute, we're limited to matching, working with an existing parking lot. I mean, yes, we have a lot of area to the north, I know everyone's saying, why don't you take that green space there and put it over there? It just, when you're limited to a parking lot that's there, what can you do? It's ridiculous what we've done there, that's a ridiculous layout, tilting it like that, but that, it just shows you, it doesn't work. You have to, you have to go with what is there and continue the pattern. And even when you do try to take it out that way, you end up losing a space. There's no way someone could get out of the most northwest, uh, uh, west parking lot. But anyway, yes, it looks rough, I understand that, but it's a dimensioned plan, it doesn't fit. How did they come up with twenty-eight and twenty-six? Someone drew many of these sketches, like you said, years ago, probably Jim Sharrall of our office, who was working on this project long before me, and they determined that's it, that's all there is.
Will either one of these parking lots be for employees, or will it only be for patrons?
It's open to the public.
It's open to the public, where do the employees park right now?
They park at Donut Cutter.
They park at Donut Cutter, okay. So you guys have a, a, a parking agreement with Donut Cutter to let the employees park there?
We've had parking agreements with several entities throughout the years. As far as a five-foot wall on Oxford, I never said we, we wouldn't do it. If the ordinance allows for it and you're concerned with it, consider it done. That's not an issue, the lighting's not an issue, if you want us to remove poles, we'll remove poles. But, you know, as far as, um, configuration, hopefully that's satisfied your...
Yeah, but just a couple more questions for Pat.
Okay.
Pat, have you spent some time just trying different configurations? Like, I'm not an engineer, so I'm not gonna sit here and try to do your job, but I just wanna make sure I understand.
Absolutely, many hours we've spent trying all different configurations, but you're just limited with the space you have there. It just, you got some dead space, like on that one on the north, so you have dead space, you can't get more parking spaces in, so that's why we, I know everyone says, why do you put landscaping up there, who cares? Well, that's where it's available. So, if we're gonna try to make, Jim Epping tried to make the parking lot as much, as nice aesthetically as he could by using the available area. So, the area on Oxford was, was an area, we'd all want it to the west, but it's not there, it's to the north. Yeah, we tried many layouts.
So if I, if I made a motion to table this, um, and so that we had an engineered plan, you would come up with this exact plan just in CAD?
Yes, this is, that's all it would be CAD, yeah, there wouldn't be no improvement.
As a landscape architect, we're also planners, and we work closely with Pat in his office. I think what's important to remember is, is everybody in this room presumably has a car, has driven a car, we've all gone through parking lots, and dimensionally, uh, they have to work a certain way, right? Turning radiuses, uh, fire and safety, getting in, getting out, snow removal, people have mentioned. So, so as much as we'd like to say, boy, let's, let's make this one-way in and then loop around, just dimensionally, uh, there'd be no way to, to, to turn a car in such a short distance, right? If you think of a, a neighborhood with a roundabout or a cul-de-sac or a parking lot that has a, a roundabout, we know that that dimension is about sixty-foot wide, and the reason it's sixty-foot wide is so we can get an ambulance to turn around in it. So, to, to create a, a parking lot that says, boy, we could narrow the lanes and make them diagonal, and then loop around at the end, and then come back out, so people flow in and flow out, it makes a tremendous amount of sense. But dimensionally, cars are, parking spots are eighteen-foot wide, we've, we've made a provision where we have some more shallow ones, uh, so that, that we can create a little bit more landscape area. But at the end of the day, we're still limited by just the physics of cars and moving cars and creating, you know, dimensional spaces. As a planner, you know, the first thing we do is we look at it, how big is this area? And then it becomes a very mathematical, it, as much as we say we're designers, we really are mathematicians, because we have to take the size of a parking spot, the, the size of a, a drive lane, turning movements, everything else, and it has to work. You know, we can't, we can't, we, we've all seen the, the silly movie, um, I can't remember the name, but where the, the marching band marches into the alley and they all just kinda back up and, 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 you know, get, uh, uh, caught up. That's what we really would create here, we have to keep it safe, we have to imagine that people are leaving in the wintertime and the nighttime, and so we have to make that math work.
I did just double-check, and our ordinance does say it has to be twenty-four feet for two-way traffic, and on your Oxford lot, it is only twenty feet over there.
That, I, I'd love to see that angled parking lot, that, you, you, Jim just described turning maneuverability around those, the end, end cap there, which is gonna be pretty tough with the twenty-foot lane.
That is, that is the angled parking lot.
I, I like that better than this.
But it has five spaces less.
That is the problem. Yes, I agree, that is the problem, but that is a better, easier layout to maneuver in a vehicle than the perpendicular parking lot.
So for a one-way, you need fifteen feet. For two-way traffic, you need twenty-four feet minimum. So, when you're looking at Oxford, you know, turning it into a one-way might be your only option if you can know, have no other layout for the amount of parking spaces you need, and your drive lane does not meet what it's supposed to.
I can comment on that. Um, so, the, the drive aisle width in the code of ordinances does refer to twenty-four feet, this plan has been reviewed several times now, that was not commented on a, at all in any of the reviews. My suspicion would be that the twenty-foot area that is shown, um, in previous reviews was perhaps not looked at as, the drive aisle diagram that's provided... I don't know what's, in, in the zoning ordinance, it does show parking on either side of the two-way drive aisle. So, perhaps in previous reviews, it was looked at not as a standard two-way drive aisle, you do have the ability of the, as a planning commission, to reduce the aisle width, if you would like to do that. But I'd have to go back to the previous reviewers and ask why that was not included.
Well, the consent judgment, the consent judgment tied us to the ordinance at the time, February of 2020.
It would've still been twenty-four feet. That's like a, that's a fairly standard requirement across all communities. So that's something that I would have to go back to previous reviewers and see what, what the thought was there. I, I don't think that it was missed, I think they had a different way of thinking about it, would be my guess.
But doing, if, if we did require twenty-four feet, all that's gonna do is eliminate some more buffer.
You know, if you...
I don't think there's any more room for buffer, I think it then has to be a one-way, and then they can add some more buffer. They can do exactly what Carlisle Wortman...
Well, but they, they have to have the minimum number of feet that is permitted in the consent judgment.
Yes.
The minimum number of spaces, I'm sorry.
They could probably move that, the, the landscape island in the middle, they could probably shift that over a little bit.
That, that's what would end up happening, I would assume, is it would come out of the landscape island.
But isn't that where Carlisle Wortman said, turn it into a one-way, and then you can add that landscaping all along the west side?
But I think that's the sketch that they have up here, that is the one-way, and they lose five spaces. So I would guess if they're gonna gain those four feet, it's the landscape island that they're going to gain it from.
Or you lose four, you shift everything over.
Does it have to be angled in the one-way?
You get five feet.
Can you have this, this diagram as presented, but make it one-way?
It'd be too, it'd be hard to pull into a perpendicular...
And you're coming in, 'cause either way, you're gonna come in this way or this way, so you just can only go in this way, like that, and like that, out.
There's, the, the ingress and egress is all off of the alley, right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Great, so couldn't you just make one in and one out?
That, right, that's what I'm saying, like, you can only go in this way, around, and then out.
I mean, it's straight parking, it doesn't matter which way you're coming from.
Right.
So, let me make sure that I'm understanding...
It seems like you could get a lot of spots in if you did perpendicular along the west property line.
Up against the residential on the west?
Well, with a buffer.
These are, keep in mind, the fire marshal approved the plan, you know, we're, we don't wanna create, we don't wanna create any safety issues.
The fire marshal can't get a fire truck in there, so he's not concerned with that.
You can't, you can't, you know, we don't wanna create an issue where you're one-way in, one-way out, you know, and people are going the wrong way, which happens all the time.
So, if you made this...
We also don't wanna make a drive aisle that's too small, so...
There's no parking on either side of the drive aisle, so I think that's, that's, you know...
I mean, our, our, we can make that decision, I guess, if we wanted to, but our ordinance says twenty-four feet, so...
To, to entertain that, I would, if they can produce, um, some auto turn, showing that a large, you know, big old pickup truck could make that turn, I would.
To make which turn? This turn right here?
Yeah, those two, those two turns right there. I'd entertain the thought of...
And here.
Of accepting the plan as is.
So I'm looking at, yeah, at LP one, which I think in some ways makes it easier to see the parking spaces.
If we remove that...
Does that get you twenty-four feet?
Is this LP one?
Yeah, I just think it's like cleaner lines for...
Not as busy.
Parking spaces.
Wait a minute. On the landscape plan, that little island says striped asphalt.
This little island here?
Yeah, so it's not, that's not, that's just pavement, right?
It's just pavement, striped, yes. But it does give you that width.
So I guess what my question is, is why can't you just make, let's just say, I don't care which one's which, but let's just say the north one is in only, and the south one is out only. So then you have a one-way drive, we don't have to worry about the width over there, you could add a little bit more landscaping.
Don't we meet the twenty-four with that?
Without, without losing any additional spots.
It's, it's a good point, it's an interesting point, but the, I think the, the planners would show that the, the advantage of narrowing a one-way drive is, is when you back out of a diagonal spot, you kinda back out on that angle and then go forward. The dimension, that, that wider dimension is more important when it's perpendicular, because, you know, we've all been in parking lots where you have to swing out more to a right angle to get out. So, so to put, to, to, to maintain the number of parking spots and, and it has to be perpendicular, so to make it more narrow would, would not allow anybody to safely back out, there'd be, people would be backing into...
I'm not talking about changing it to angled, I'm saying every, every parking spot like it is.
But, but what he's saying is...
Saying that for this northwest spot, it's gonna be very difficult to get out of that parking spot.
And generally, you see a smaller...
But would it, then, wouldn't it be if you could go in and out either way?
What I'm saying is when you're backing out of your parking spot, if it's an angled parking spot, that's where the narrow drive lanes become an advantage, because you don't, you don't make that ninety-degree, you kinda go off at sixty degrees and back in. As soon as they're perpendicular, you need that full twenty-four foot to back out safely without hitting the car behind you.
Sure. I, I would agree with that, but why is that stopping?
It certainly could be one way of travel, I think that that would make sense, and you could do that with, you know, striping arrows on the pavement, but it wouldn't change, it wouldn't, I don't think it would create additional landscape area.
What about on that lot, so it's twenty on the left side, the west side, right? There's twenty there instead of the twenty-four that our ordinance asks for.
But that's asphalt, is that striped asphalt, are you measuring from the striped asphalt?
Do you have a pole in the middle of the striped asphalt? I, I'm, I'm not measuring, I'm going by what the, uh...
There's a light pole, I believe there is, which can be removed. If you add, if, if I may add, so that's the west side of Oxford, we control those lots. To add five feet of, you've got a six-foot wall there, to add, as Carlisle suggested, adding five feet of, of green belt, but taking away from the drive aisle on lots that we control, you know?
Are, are you going to, I mean...
It, it doesn't, it doesn't benefit, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I'm having a hard time.
Aren't you supposed to build a house on that lot?
Yeah.
Okay, so somebody eventually will be living there.
Yeah.
Right, so you could control it, but eventually, it benefits somebody who's living there.
Well, you can put landscaping on the, on the house side, on the residential side.
But also, every bit of landscaping helps absorb that rain when it rains, it's better for the environment, I mean, we want, we want landscape.
But we're taking, we're, we're detracting from a safety issue to add landscaping that really, you know, is not gonna serve, you know, that much of a purpose with respect to the parking lot itself, is what I'm getting at.
I think we're confusing two different issues here. I think half of the commissioners are talking about our concern that your drive aisle is too narrow, that the ordinance requires twenty-four, and you show twenty feet. But then there's also a discussion about the landscaping, and they're two separate issues, I think we need to address.
Right, so we, we talked about the landscaping.
Like, if we turn it one-way, then it only needs to be fifteen, you add five, you've satisfied both of those, right?
I see what you're saying.
You've hit a one-way, how wide we need it to be for one-way, you get the little added landscaping, and in my brain, that's a win-win.
Unless they can offer an alternative, um, to meeting the requirement, or convince us that we're okay waiving that four feet.
Vice Chair Kempner?
Yeah.
Um, so I, I have one comment, and I wanna make sure I'm understanding what the commission is discussing. So you're discussing keeping ninety-degree spaces, but turning this portion of the lot into a one-way and adding a strip of landscaping here, is that what you're discussing?
That's what I'm asking, yes.
So, from a traffic circulation standpoint, I would have concerns with people not realizing this is one-way, because it's not angled parking, and then they get to here, and someone else is coming from here, and now they're both stuck.
I, I don't think there's enough, uh, you don't have a large enough radius, you'd be clipping, you'd be clipping the tail end of the, the cars on the end.
As is right now?
Potentially right now, yeah, but if you narrowed that, that west drive aisle, I...
For a one, in a one-way?
Almost certainly, yeah, I think that would just be too close. You know, imagine being in a big pickup truck and trying to, be, being in that south drive aisle and trying to turn right. Or being in the north drive aisle and trying to turn to the south, I think that'd be a tough turn.
So there, we have, there's a solution, or, or a turn, alternative, I should say. We can move that pole, uh, to the east, we can remove that asphalt area, and then you've got your twenty-four, more than twenty-four feet there. Or the striping, I should say, and you've got your twenty-four-foot radius.
Striping was four feet wide?
Yes, from the, striping to the first parking lot, or first parking space. And we'll just move the pole further, um, further east.
Well, you gotta get rid of some lighting anyway.
Or remove it, it's up to, yeah, if you want us to remove it, we'll remove it, you know, that can be one of the ones we remove, so...
That was one of their comments, is that they thought you had a lot of light poles for that small parking lot.
Yeah.
And I would agree, that seemed like a lot of light poles.
So that'll satisfy, it, it's really a safety issue, we don't wanna make it one-way, you know, but people coming towards each other, then they realize it's one-way, they gotta stop, back out, you know? It, it creates a real traffic issue, so, so we can do that, that, that would work.
So you're gonna be building that house on that adjacent lot?
Two lots.
Two, the adjacent two lots?
You know anyone, any buyers?
Well, I'm just, just wondering out loud if you'd put a row of arborvitae's along there or some...
I'm sorry?
Put a row of arborvitae's along there?
Oh, yeah, so when that house is built...
I mean, it'd be in your best interest, 'cause you want, you want the house to, you know, you want somebody to buy the house, so...
Well, that, that owner will, either we'll landscape it, or they'll landscape it, you know, there's, there's plenty of room on the other side of the wall to put up arborvitae's or pine trees, or whatever that resident...
That's only a forty-foot wide lot, so there's not plenty of room.
Well, there, yeah, but you can, you can put some arborvitae's along that wall.
So when I'm looking at that striped area, I don't see a measure, measurement for it offhand, unless you know of a spot, but when I look at it, you know, uh, in comparison to a nine-foot-wide parking spot, it doesn't look like it's half of it. How wide was that striped area? Because if you're getting rid of one foot, then we still have to make a decision, or two feet... Because if you're getting rid of one foot, then we still have to make a decision, or two feet, then we still have to make a decision about whether we, um, waive the drive aisle.
They could probably shift over the landscape island a little bit, though. The one on the east side, that could shift over, because it's close.
This one right here?
Yeah, you could probably shift it over, it, what did you point to?
There's not much room there either.
Sorry, this landscape island.
But if you take out the striped area, I bet that's not four feet either, I bet it's like three, it's close.
The striped area?
Yeah, the striped area.
Yeah, I don't think it's Murphy's pole.
But you could, well, they're going to get rid of the light pole, though.
No, but, I mean, that might give us the cer, the area, the circumference of the pole. It looks like it's touching that. The, the size of the pole might tell us the size of that stripe.
Oh, no, it's a can't find, it doesn't mean nothing.
I was gonna, excuse me, I understand what you're saying. That looks like about three foot right now, as you're saying, but if you looked at the parking lot, if you follow the six spaces over, the one closest to the alley, all those spaces, there's, there's a room there to shift, if you see what I'm saying? All of them could be shifted over and gain that extra foot or whatever we need.
But are we shifting it over and losing more landscaping then?
Yes.
Yeah. You're decreasing the landscape space a little bit, but I don't, I think Jim could still get the trees in there.
But if they can meet the ordinance for the parking, they're at their minimum number of parking spaces, and my understanding is that we don't really have any other-
We have to, I mean, we have to, they have to have 26, and they have to have access from the alley. And then we apply our ordinances on top of that, right? So if they can meet our ordinances and keep those numbers, yay.
So if we move, if we get rid of the striping, we're at 23.
About, we're not confident in that yet, we're, I think confirmed, he thinks.
I think we're at least 23, right, Pat?
Yeah, it looks, it looks, looks like, but- Like, 23 feet right now, striping out, so.
Yeah, sufficient room for two-way, you know, vehi, vehicular circulation.
And that is an area, a lot of communities, I understand, there says 24, and we do have 24 where there's parking on each side. There's a lot of communities where it's 22, and you don't have parking on either side. I'm just saying, I think there's a little leeway in there.
There's 24 on the parking side.
Yeah, but a lot of communities would make you put in a 10-foot radius, and, you know, they'd make you get rid of those two spots in the middle, and make you put in an island, and make you put in a 10-foot radius, so you could make that turn without clipping the back of the vehicles.
If they didn't have a consent judgment.
Yeah.
They didn't have a consent judgment.
Are those, like, compact spaces, would you get more? Probably not, huh?
No.
We do have some compact spaces towards the alley.
Right.
That's helping the buffer in the front, so I think that's important to leave those where they are.
Does eliminating some light poles do anything for us? Or does that really?
That's the only one on the, on the lot.
Just the one? On that, mm.
There's the other one in the corner, like in the middle, across from that.
I thought there were five.
There's one in the north, but that one's going to be really hard, because it's right, basically on the retaining wall.
There are, there's three on the south side.
Or the screen wall. I don't think that helps, as far as the layout.
Well, it sounds like they have come up with a way to meet the ordinance.
Yeah, I agree. And I think we're stuck with the number of parking spaces.
And I think we're stuck with the configuration based on the statements made, or the representations made by their engineer. So, it looks like, um, based on my notes.
And we are looking at Oxford right now, are you talking about both of them?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm just summarizing my thoughts and my notes. Um, on Oxford, a five-foot wall height along Oxford, sounds like they're amenable to that. Also sounds like they would be willing to swap out the species of the landscaping, so that we had native specie, species of same size and growth pattern for both lots, as well as reducing the number of light poles and complying with the lighting standards of our ordinance. And in order to meet the ordinance requirement for minimum width in the drive aisle, they will revise the island in the Oxford lot. I guess the questions that I still have is, how do we know the number of light poles to reduce it to? Or is that something we defer to staff in their administrative review?
Yes, typically, that, that's something you would defer to staff. Um, we have the consent judgment, which talks about the zero-foot candles and the shielding as well.
But that was, it referred to the ordinance requirement, so that's why I said ordinance, but if you think we should say consent judgment and ordinance, it's fine.
Yes, I think it would be appropriate to include both.
Did anybody else have anything else that-
No, I, I'm just, I'm kind of leaning, there's so much, I would almost rather see this again, um, with the suggestions we're making. I don't know if, we have to vote on both tonight, correct? I mean, um-
I believe it is one. It's one package.
Right, so we, we would, almost before we start talking about Eaton, but-
Well, they're still going to go through an administrative review process on final-
I understand, but we're asking for more landscaping for, I mean, that's a big thing. We want the species change to, I'm just telling you my, my-
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
We're asking them pretty much to redesign their parking lot now without the stripe, move things over, get rid of light poles, I mean, there is a lot here. For our standard, us, I mean, historically, we've asked them to come back and re, um, with a list of things and concerns, so that's where I'm leaning on this, before we even get to Eaton's parking lot. We've asked, we've had lots of discussion about the reconfiguration of, of spots, and maybe if one of our staff could review that before our meeting, at least, or one of our engineers, it would give us a better understanding if that's truly, I, I mean, we have one additional configuration. Is, is that really all that is available? I, I'm not a parking lot engineer, um, and so that's where I'm going with that. I think we have a lot of asks already, um, before we even get to Eaton, but that's my thought.
So I guess I know they're all one, but does anybody have any more comments on the Eaton portion of it?
Oxford.
Sorry, thank you, Oxford portion of it.
Oh, I'm done with Oxford, but I would like to talk about Eaton before we-
Yeah. All right, so let's move on to the Eaton portion of it. Commissioner Allen, do you want to start?
A collection of information, are we ever going to be able to talk again?
We already did set us some comments.
That we get from three minutes that we got, and that's it.
Correct.
All right, so the Eaton one. I think this one is also showing the four-foot screen wall along the right way, is that correct?
Yes, but for some reason, that wasn't called out, I thought, by our engineer on the Eaton lot, was it?
I think, I think it was, yeah, it was.
I think Kristen has a-
It's six feet on the western boundary.
Yeah, which is, that, what's that, that's the ordinance, because it says, our ordinance says if it's next to, if it's adjacent to a residential, it has to be a six-foot wall. If it's along right of way, it has to be four feet, the four feet, eight inches, but the planning commission can change that, if they feel the need to. So I would like to see that wall, a five-foot wall, just to be consistent with what we're asking for on Eaton.
I think-
On Oxford, I'm sorry, you know what, I'm looking at the wrong one, I'm sorry.
I think Kristen has something to add.
Aren't the apartments across from there, maybe that's why they did it.
So the-
I know, it's across from there.
From Eaton Street?
Yes.
Okay, Kristen has something to add.
Okay, I think that you're correct, Commissioner Allen, that they did not specifically request a five-foot wall along Eaton, and I think that had to do with the fact that that was a specific resident request on Oxford. So it was a recommendation, but you could certainly continue that recommendation over to Eaton. If you would like to see consistency, definitely.
I think consistency would be great. I don't, I don't know how the others feel about that, but if we're going to require it on one, because the homeowners would like to see it, I would think the homeowners across the street over here would also like to see it.
Okay, five-foot wall, agreed.
And then, not to beat a dead horse about the, the, the property that you guys are swapping with Lugo, that, can you go to, um, sheet nine?
Which one is?
Not to beat it to death, but I'm going to beat it a little bit more here.
Am I going up or down?
Uh, probably down, it's the second to last one.
The photometrics?
Her, her package is different than what we have in front of us.
Is it LB2?
Like, it's the same things, but hers is just health numbers different.
It's sheet nine of 10 of the engineering plans. Yes, that one.
Okay.
All right, so that, the paved area, the existing paved area on the north half of lot 337 is an existing parking lot, correct?
That's part of the parking right now, yes.
Yes, so you guys are taking out some of the pavement, and for the 17-foot buffer, that, I, I realize that that lot's not yours, or it won't be yours, but it, there's this dead space to the, on the south end of it, and it's just calling out for two parking spaces there. And then you could take the two parking spaces off the west side, and you could give them a nine-foot wide buffer.
It's not our property, we can't do that.
Aren't you guys doing a property swap?
Yeah, that's part of the Lugo property. We're taking part of theirs, they're taking part of ours.
And so that, that part has been settled, which property belongs to whom?
So lot 337 is not yours.
It's not part of this, right.
It's not part of this lot, okay.
So that's the only, other than double, that's why I asked about employee parking, because if it's employee parking, you could maybe double park a little bit, and again, lop off the last two spots on the end.
That's a good idea, but we, we don't have it.
If it's not owner parking then, or employee parking, then that's not going to be an option. Although they, you guys do do valet parking, don't you?
They're not going to do it after this, under the consent judgment.
Thank you.
Is that it?
I think that's it, yep.
Okay, anyone else?
One more buffer.
I just support the consistency with the walls.
I do, too. I also think as far as getting people to use these parking lots, it helps if they all look similar and similar to the restaurant, we'll just keep kind of lots of consistency there. Anything? Any other discussion? A motion? Question?
Well, I'm new to the planning commission, but I would be interested to hear, if, if, if it's allowed, what the residents have to say, maybe, if there's, I don't know. If, if, if it's not something you guys do, then I don't want to break protocol, but-
Um, yeah, our, our, our rules of procedure is one, one time for any particular item.
There's been a verbal commitment to the wall. How, again, not to question the integrity, but where is our ability to, to hold to that? Or is it totally at their discretion regardless of what they said tonight?
I, I would want it to be part of our motion.
Yeah, just make, make it a condition of your motion, that the Oxford wall goes to five feet and Eaton wall goes to five feet.
I think all of the items that we were concerned about should be a condition.
No, and that's, you're answering my question, so.
If I may, Vice Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Um, so, um, there was some allusion to this earlier, but all the conditions of the motion that, that you all are talking about would be something that I would review before we stamp the plans approved. So, the five-foot wall, the staff would concern, confirm that the five-foot wall is in place. We would confirm that the lighting details have been provided, that the photometrics have been adjusted appropriately. You talked about the shifting of the parking, all of these things we would look at before the plans are stamped approved and we move on to approved engineer drawings.
Just one, if we did, we, we have the ability to postpone.
You do.
And we do have a meeting in two weeks? Wasn't there a special meeting, uh, requested?
A special meeting, correct, on the 13th? You have the ability to table something to a date certain, so you could table this to the 13th if you feel like you need the applicant to revise the drawings and bring those revisions back, similar to what you did with the Philip Rowe homes. Alternatively, um, and what happens in, in some communities is that the plan is approved with a number of conditions and staff confirms those conditions. So those are your-
Recently, we tabled something and then gave a date, would, would it be okay to ask?
So if you table, you have to table it to a date certain. If you postpone it, then it's the next available-
Is it reasonable to ask to come back on the 13th, or?
That would be up to the applicant, if they feel they can meet that turnaround time.
You know, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse. You can accomplish what you want to accomplish with the conditions. We would have to meet those conditions, there's, really, we're under time constraints for this season.
That's what I was thinking, two weeks, or however, whatever week that is.
In two weeks, we've got crews mobilized. I mean, we've got, you know, tho, these conditions, we've basically conceded to meeting, you know, there's no reason why it can't be part of the motion to approve. We have to meet those conditions, you know, as, as, as she indicated. There's really no reason to come back, um, other than us losing critical time and jeopardizing the, the timing of this project, so.
Thank you, but if we don't feel comfortable, we can vote to postpone, or table.
You can vote how you wish, but I'm just telling you what the reality is, so. I just wanted to add one thing with your concern about, it seems like a lot of things, but really, they're very minor tweaks, is what I call them, and they could be done, like, within a day. And the plans have to be looked at again by, you know, each of the, uh, uh-
I understand, we recently went through this with another project, and if there's a list of things we historically have asked to come back, if there's major changes, I mean, we've taken-
I'm just saying, it's minimal changes, and they're going to be looking at it, so we could do it like-
Come back on the 13th, that would be enough turnaround time?
Well, the problem is you're not going to have your consultants' time to review it in that time, that'll be the problem. But right now, if it's approved contingent upon these things, we'll make those changes. It'll get turned in, and they'll get reviewed by your consultants, and they'll say yea or nay, so, yeah. Thank you.
I'm ready to make a motion if there's no just-
One more question. So I'm looking again at the Oxford lots, because I'm, like, so sad about the lack of landscaping. On the alley side, there's just trees and grass. We might be shipping and shifting down.
Madam Chair, just to follow up on that, yes, sod lawn or grass lawn with trees, part of our thought process there was that, that will be where some of the snow goes, both from the alleys, the alleys furrowed over, as well as, you know, parking lot snow. Our goal always with landscaping is that it looks good, you know, the day it's put in, but it looks good five and 10 years down the road, and so we, we really struggle to say, you know, what is a full landscape, and what is a landscape that will survive, given these, you know, harsh condi, harsh conditions? So it'll certainly be maintained. Vincenta Garage does a great job in terms of maintenance and, and looking out for their properties, but what I'm more concerned about is the natural environments of snow and ice and things like that.
Do you think that those landscaped areas are large enough to hold the snow of the parking lot?
Well, I think it'll, it'll be part of the, you know, the snow strategy, if you will. But, yeah, the, the snow will be put in different areas. Ultimately, it can be removed from the site, too, if we get a big blizzard, and if it has to, you know, a lot of landscape companies will come in with a front-end loader and remove it if, if it gets to be too much, but that is one of several areas where snow will be piled.
Thank you. Okay, motion away.
Um, I'm going to make a motion to approve PSP-10-22 Vincenta Garage Eaton and Oxford Parking Lot Site Plan, subject to the following conditions. subject to the following conditions. Native species of s- I'm sorry, the, uh,
Burning bush.
Burning bush.
The burning bush, uh, to be replaced by a native species of the same size and growth pattern. The five, a minimum five-foot wall height along both Oxford and Eaton for each lot. A reduction of the number of light poles and lighting to comply with the standards in the ordinance and the consent judgment. As far as the number of light poles, I defer to administration to make that determination. Revise the island on the Oxford lot so that the drive on the south side meets ordinance minimum width requirement.
I think that's the, uh,
The west side.
West side.
Thank you.
Yep.
The applicant provide the required cut sheets for staff review prior to final approval of the plan. The applicant reduce the light levels at the southern property line of the Oxford lot to zero-point-zero-foot candles. Compliance with all of the items noted in the DPW August nineteen twenty-twenty-two correspondence and HRC's August eighteen twenty-twenty review letters. And final site plan approval from DPW, HRC, the Fire Marshal, and the Community Development Director.
I second.
Any more discussion? Call roll, please.
Vice Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Um, yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamame?
Yes.
Commissioner Pasalakwa?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
No.
Motion passes five to one.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Congratulations. And next item on the agenda is the annual community development report.
So, not a whole lot to share with this. This is a requirement of the State Planning Act, and also one of our items that we have to submit as we work towards our redevelopment-ready certification. It details our activities for the year in the department, and also lays out the work plan for the following year. I'm happy to answer any questions. Um, this evening, we would be looking for a motion from the planning commission that you are ready to distribute it to the city council for their acceptance.
Yeah, it's just a formality, kind of, right?
Yes.
Put it to me.
Someone make a motion.
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one annual report and twenty-twenty-two work plan for submission to city council.
I'll second. You're welcome.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Kempner?
Yes.
Commissioner Hamame?
Yes.
And Commissioner Pasalakwa?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Liaison reports. Do we have any liaisons, except me? I don't think so. Alright, that's just me. DDA did not have a quorum, so there wasn't a whole, we just kind of talked a whole lot. There was no decisions made. Um, and that's about it, except that boucle is, is like, on the horizon in October, and we are gonna spookify the downtown, there are many skeletons everywhere. Um, any, millions of people are at home. If you're interested, contact the DDA and sponsor a skeleton and creepify it for downtown. Okay, that's it.
I think it's sponsored skeleton?
For sure, you just have to, like, put in the work.
Just downtown?
Just downtown.
Um, Commissioner reports or comments, anyone?
Is this, is mine inappropriate if I plead somebody for selling their house?
No.
I sold my house, it's not closed yet, so I'm still a Berkeley resident, but, um, the deal fell through on the house we were buying, so if anyone knows anyone selling a house in Berkeley,
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Send them my way, because I don't wish to leave, but I don't really know what to do right now.
Ouch.
So, I have like a month.
Any other comments? I, I would just like to, um, thank residents that came to speak. I know that, um, there are times that meetings are very frustrating, and, um, we, um, we have ordinances that we have to follow, so while we might like to see the most amazing things, um, our ordinances don't always allow us to demand them of people. So, we do what we can do within the legality of what we are allowed to do. Um, and that's it, although I recognize that it's probably very frustrating sometimes.
That was a good example of that.
And, just to further that, we do receive emails, and we get the, I mean, if, I know it's not the same, but, I mean, I always read the emails that come to us, and it's a little bit longer than the three minutes you could write pages. I, I, I know it doesn't do the same, but uh, we always get those emails passed on to us, so.
And I always read them too.
Yeah.
It's actually, it's actually really great. As soon as I got them today, I read the, the ones that we got today, so. Sometimes it's good to vent in an email, where you, you know, obviously, three minutes is not enough time to really express all your, your thoughts.
Especially when you've been living it for a long time, you have a lot to say.
Yes.
And
There's a lot of emotion
Absolutely.
And, and understandably enough, but, you know, if you feel the need to write a email, know it, know that we will read it and take it into consideration.
Kristen, do you have anything?
Just that we have that special meeting on September thirteenth. Thank you to everyone who's gotten back to me. We will have a quorum as long as no one else says that they can't make it. Um, so we do have one item on that agenda. We also have items for the regular September meeting too, um, and we're hoping to dive into some of the, um, not, quick fix isn't the right word, but some of the ordinance amendments, we want to kind of have prelude the big rewrite, which hopefully will be starting beginning of next year, beginning of the calendar year.
Yay.
Yeah, that's all I have. Oh, one, one more thing, actually, that I should mention. Um, so we are relocating some of the spaces in City Hall. We will be closed to the public the week after Labor Day. So if there's anyone watching who wants to submit building permits or plans, it's gonna be challenging. Um, we'll be taking things via the Dropbox and things like that, but if you can get a minute ahead of time, that, that's appreciated.
There you go.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting closed.